If I may, off the recording started just for the record, let's just do a roll call. That way we get it in the meeting minutes that, I mean, while it's being recorded.
The, from the motion, the motion was to accept that this meeting did have proper notice and the people, let's do a roll call real quick on what they voted. Charles?
Yes.
Pointed you, Scott?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
William?
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay, one abstaining and all, everybody else was in on it. Okay? I'd said, anything else? We've got a lot to cover and I don't want to take a lot of time. I put time on each one of the elements that we're going to be covering tonight. And that said, the agenda for tonight. We're going to be talking about a golf tournament, whether we want to sponsor that. We're going to get into the freestyle season for women, then we'll talk freestyle season for men. Then we get into a committee relative to seeing if we don't want to make a committee to go over the procedures and guidelines that we go into our folk style season. So we have a means to have some operating procedures for this season and how we work within the districts, how we select teams, things like that. We'll get to that though. And there was a fifth item too, but I lost my meeting notice here.
Let the record show that Derek Patterson has come in.
Derek Patterson?
All right, I got it.
Thank you Derek, let it be shown that he's here. That said, we will go into, I want to introduce tonight. We have a special guest with us. Johnny Christman. I've officiated with Johnny quite a bit of time after state body, after the state tournament this year. He called me, said, hey, you know what? I got an idea. I'd like to present it to your board. We have a line item for $15,000 to raise money this year, line item within revenue to bring in money of $15,000. He's got something that helped us get down that road. If we all decide we'd like to do this.
Yeah, that's what you guys, little flyer here. Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you. First off, I want to say thank you guys for just giving me a few moments of your time. You know, we've been here long, long time today, so I'll be sure. As he mentioned, what I'm proposing is a sponsored golf tournament, a fundraiser for all of USA Kansas Wrestling. I hosted a golf tournament for baseball teams before and it has been profitable for them. It has covered uniforms for entire teams. Here, this team's name, helmets, whatever that is. And that's what I'm proposing here. All the proceeds that a golf tournament fundraiser can bring in goes to whatever the state of Kansas wrestling needs for. Whether that be, you know, a new mat or just paying for food for workers at a state tournament. Or eventually I would like to turn it into a scholarship fund for some, some of our student athletes that are going to be going to college and representing Kansas. That is pretty much the basic concept of what I'm trying to get at here. And to reserve a golf course to put it on their agenda, it is $500. So it's not, not a lot, but golf tournaments can net anywhere from $2,000 and up depending on the amount of sponsors we get. That's, that's kind of what I'm proposing to everybody here. If there's something more. Yes, it'd be $500 is the down deposit to secure a spot and date at a golf course. And then we bring in as many teams as possible up to what they say on a course at a time is 36 teams at a time, which is 144 golfers. 144 golfers is a $14,400 that we're just bringing in off of entry fees alone. Which is a substantial amount of money just for a quick one day event that we all get to go out and have fun as well. With this, I would like it to be something that, it's not just held in a district too. I would like it to be where, you know, if one year we have it in district two, the next year we go to a area, district three, area, district four and, and around. So we're not just going to the same place. We need to help communities in each district.
Is it?
So they're going to be free drinking?
Absolutely. If you look at the flyers, there's two free drinks included with everything. Absolute.
Yes, sir. You said, you know, each or one district, could you do this in a year in all four districts?
Ah, I don't see why we wouldn't be able to.
I'm sorry. Four tournaments?
Yeah, just at different times. But like say you had one out of Garden City or something.
Yep.
Or up in KC and then one in Wichita, Manhattan.
Absolutely.
Just if you can do that much in one or roughly give or take.
Right. If we can do four, it's just, yep, absolutely. I, I, that's no problem with that. It would be in the sense, I did, when I initially thought of the plan, it would give, you know, district two people a chance to go out to a district four area and support their community around or whatever, but.
So Johnny, when you reached out to Kurt, Kurt shared with me, I reached out to at least one person in each district. I know Joseph is already looking, trying to find a course in district four.
Okay. I know this. You talked to any clubs or any golf courses that would donate? I know out in district four, Mariah Hills and Dodge would be willing to donate for an event. They do it every year for our high school. Okay. Wrestling program. So that'd be something to at least ask, would you be willing to donate if, you know, we pay for X amount of during tickets or something along those lines? So that's just something that. Okay, yeah. Think of one in the future. Okay.
Please, I don't play golf. Is there such a sport that will allow us to bring in our own alcohol so that we could make money off of that?
There are definitely courses that will allow that. They do charge for that, but, but yeah, that is something that's beautiful. We need to get to know them really well. Yeah, okay.
Yeah. So the sponsorship, are we, are we supposed to try to dig up sponsors to sponsor holes?
Yes, as many, as many as we can get, the more money we're going to bring in.
Okay, yeah.
Absolutely.
So we want obviously more committee and the sponsorship committee from there, right? Trying to get 18 holes sponsored.
Definitely more the better. I already have a handful of summits that if this is something moving forward, they'd love to help out.
So it's a $500 deposit for the course?
For the course.
And then what is the other cost outside of that?
Like what's, let's just say a, a local business in town, but I mean, anything does one knows inside or something. Yeah. And they wanted to have a sign at hole number two that just had their company name on it and just, hey, thanks for, for helping out, donating, sponsoring the hole for us.
What is that, what do you charge?
Minimum $500 will be just if you want to be a sponsor for us. And then I've been at several tournaments where they do, I mean, premium sponsors where if you want to pay a thousand dollars, you get your name mentioned in the after the tournament, we'll all have a meal. We throw their name in there as a thank you as well, not just a sign sitting outside the course. At Newton, yeah, but I mean, and it doesn't have to just be someone playing. You can come out, ride around in a golf cart.
Like I, I like, I know, I know our court call team runs, runs one every year and it helps, it helps our school and I, I enjoy it. I think it's a normal fundraiser. The thing, I don't think it's out of the normal people expect. You say, hey, we're going to have a golf tournament. Yeah, okay.
He has a good question, I think.
So outside of the deposit, what are the other initial costs? So I see that you get the golf cart, the rain falls, two drinks and a lunch. So is that our out of pocket as well?
No, that is every person that pays their hundred dollars to play in the tournament, that's what comes into their package. That does not come out of any of them.
So the four, okay, so the $400 is paying for that package.
Correct.
That money we don't see.
Correct.
Okay, so the $500 deposit is our out of pocket.
Yes.
That's the only out of.
That is the only out of pocket.
And then their money is paying for everything else for the course.
Correct.
And then the sponsorship is the money that we get. So if we only get one sponsor, that's the money that we're getting.
Yeah. So there's. And then the profit from entry fees.
Yeah, so of the $400, just give us a general idea. So $400, how much goes to suit and beard? How much do we take in?
Depending, if we choose to, like, let's just say the course in Newton, if we choose to use their catering that they have onsite, that's $15 a person and they charge $45 per person for their green feed. So it'd be a $40 profit per every entry fee that we have. If we decide to do somebody in the wrestling community, like, I just seen somebody who has a barbecue joint that they own out of Beloit. If he wanted to do the catering for us, they only charge $5 a person if we bring somebody else on instead of them doing it.
Okay. What's our beer tender?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
What are you projecting the final amount that you?
And that, that can vary from how many sponsorships we get. But I would say, I mean, on average, you're going to profit $2,000 at minimum. A, what I have is just 18 teams. That's only one team per hole. Most tournaments have anywhere between 30 and 36 teams.
Thoughts, comments?
Hey, the motion that we.
I second it.
Yeah. Make a motion that we sponsor or that we expend, if I authorize, making it spend the $500 to reserve a down payment.
Okay.
On the golf course.
And Rich seconded.
For the record, Richard Sager makes the motion.
Yeah. All right, yeah, let's, right, we run this first one. The workshop, and we're like, hey, let's roll. You know, we start setting them up, one per, one per district all the way through. Like I know Ace has a beautiful golf course, that's very much, that thing is amazing.
Absolutely.
But we believe that Ace has this ethically nice course up there.
And this is the chance to go to these courses around, you know.
Somebody that. Have you locked into this data or is this?
No, this was just something I threw out there just to fill in.
So I have one question. Of course, I'm going to go, yes, but I have one question. What is the best ever one that you've ran?
The best one ever was $12,000 that we made in one day. And that, that covered.
And the only one was?
Say that again.
Worst ever one?
$2,300.
Hangover?
Say that. It was actually, it was at a lesser premium course. It was held at a, of course, but not a lot of people, I guess, wanted to play it, I would say is what held it up. And so we didn't have as many entries as usual and it was kind of posted late. There wasn't enough time for people to find out about the tournament.
The Sand Creek, that's the nice one.
In Newton, yes.
Yeah, I said one, nothing.
No, yeah, yes.
Hey, real quick, I have someone online who has a question. Mariah, go ahead.
Uh, just to clarify, right now we're just voting yes or no whether we're going to do this fundraiser and at a later time we'll decide what the fundraiser is for.
Is that what the motion was?
I think the fundraiser is just for general.
Let's just bring in some money and have some fun. It's just, it's a fundraiser to bring the money in. That's, and we won't be assigning it just yet. Just cumin against the line item we have for sponsorship and bringing money in.
Okay.
Did that answer your question?
Yep, it did. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one other question. Are you just donating your time or?
Yes, this is just giving back to the, to the state of Kansas wrestling. I mean, I've been registered official for 18 years and the only time I really get to see my wrestling community is when we're out there blowing the whistle. This would really be a chance, I guess, be out of our, our element in here somewhere else.
Any other discussion? So we had a motion on the floor, Brian?
Seconded by Rich.
Seconded by Rich. All in favor of that motion? Anybody opposed to the motion? It shows there was no opposition to the motion. Everybody was in favor of it. Okay, man, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I know how to get ahold of them if.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm still joking. I'm still joking. I know, I know, yeah.
Okay, hey, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yep. We'll be talking.
Okay, sounds great.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, where to start, start the meeting? I, I said there was five things on the line, item, that's one, it's down. We talk women's freestyle, then men's. The one thing I did not mention was a brief discussion of where we're at on clock, revenue. And then talk about a committee, forming a committee on freestyle season. With that, I would like to go into the women's freestyle season. I know that I've put a map out there of the state and by age group identified the talent that's in each one of those areas representing the, we've also started a meeting and got that going relative to the district representatives that are in each of the meetings. And with that, I will turn it over to you, to Susan.
Hello, everybody. First, can I just quick talk about Twin Rivers? Two seconds, I promise. Twin Rivers, our girls did amazing. We ended up coming home in 13th place out of 59 high school teams from across the country. We only had two girls that had ever been outside of Kansas and the rest of our girls, it was very, very green. And they did amazing to come out of 13th place out of all those high school teams. We should be super proud of them. Fargo camp this year is going to be at Baker University, June 29th through July 3rd. Rich Estrella is actually going to be my lead technician. He has also approached me about the possibility of a boot camp before our Fargo camp. Offering to boys and girls both. You will sleep there, you will eat there, you will grind there. $400 includes everything. Kids bring like a twin air mattress and he's going to cook for them. There's going to be people on in the rooms at themselves so to keep the kids separate when it is supposed to be separate. And so he's going to give me a little bit more detailed information about that, but he, he really wants to work with Kansas in order to help our kids get better. And so I'll be working with him hopefully more in the future, but he's making that offer to us to have our kids have that boot camp opportunity. The couple, what was it, 10 days ago, I kind of got together with all the women's directors in each district. We had a great meeting, first time meeting, talking about what we should do. Our, our petition form was incredibly outdated. The one that I was able to find from the website was from 2016. And so we kind of just went over verbiage that we could use for kids to petition for today. We had a really, really great meeting, great discussion, kind of handled that situation and have plans to, to continue on and try to make the girls better. The other thing is we talked about how we're going to handle the wrestle offs. Since we don't have the opportunity to have Southern Plains in our backyard and have that be our wrestle off opportunity. One of the things that we came up with was the person that actually holds that first place title today, the person that is going to challenge them. The person that holds the title actually gets to decide when and where that challenge happens. It isn't going to happen at RTC or is it going to happen at another opportunity of Southern Plains or, or, but that person that holds that title is going to be able to decide when and where. We kind of felt like that was a, to try to be fair to that person, you don't get to just win your title and now you got somebody to challenge you. So that kind of gives them a little bit of opportunity to hold a little bit more of the cards and the opportunities. Trying to do, what else? I think that's it. I think, I think budget wise, we're still rolling on what we, I've already made hotel reservations for Indiana. We're holding 30 rooms. I'm sure at some point I'm going to have to release or going to be able to release some of those to either parents or other folks that might need a room. We've already taken care of it. It was done in December.
Yeah.
Before.
We, Andy Albright got all those rooms together and then she followed up on it. Even got them cheaper than what they had quoted him in the past.
Yep, all the books said it's all taken care of. We have contracts and everything. And other than that, I, I've heard RTCs are going great. We're getting girls out there. We're getting more excited. I know just from numbers. Today, we're still growing. I think we're going to beat you boys here in, in about a year and a half. That's our goal. We did have more triple crown, crowns than the boys this year, which was pretty awesome to see. So not by many, too, but I'll still take it.
Well, if we defeat this, the boys, of course you're going to have more girls.
We just got.
Triple crown.
No, we just got Greco Charlie.
Well, I was saying though, and you've always got more than boys because your numbers are low.
They actually were even. They're actually pretty even right now. Okay.
We're coming for you, Charlie. Yes, there are more boys brackets than girls brackets, right? Just a minute, Charlie, we're coming.
Any questions?
I do have a question.
Okay.
So the, the verbiage or the qualifications for the, for the dual teams?
They're still the same.
And where are those at? Where are that information? What can we probably?
Okay, so if you go on the website, it, it actually says, I think it's called the Road to Fargo. Is that what it's called? The Road to Fargo? And it actually literally spells out everything that you have to do in order to qualify. Top three at state, Southern Plains, or returning qualifier from Fargo. But that, that hasn't changed. It's just more of the petition side of it that we had to kind of change a little bit because we lost Southern Plains as an opportunity.
Well, the reason why I was asking is because you said there could be a challenge.
So if you were injured, if you were injured and couldn't come today to state tournament, they were supposed to have had those petitions already to Scott or I, which we have several in, in our little thing online, but there are people that had to file a petition. And then what happens is, is the person that took first place today, these people that filed the petition, they will come together and we will have a wrestle off. The person that wins will have the dual spot. The person that loses will have the opportunity to be the ultimate. Okay, does that answer your question?
The other question to do that is, if there's, say there's one, two spots. Will they have to work, that person that's coming in when they just challenged that second spot, then they have to get you past the first spot.
So if we're taking two teams, then there would be a, a third person that would be an opportunity because we're still filling two teams, right? So that person, that third person would be able to challenge, but they would have had already been in. And the only reason you could challenge is if you're injured. So it's not just like, well, you might have had me yesterday, but now I'm going to get you tomorrow. It's not that kind of challenge. It's an injury challenge. Or like some people for Southern Plains, they have graduation. And so it's kind of things like that where opportunities were not necessarily met because of a different circumstance, not just because I didn't wrestle very well today.
Any other questions? I will follow up on a couple of things. Hold on here.
Do two pool teams, do they get a challenge the second, then a first?
Okay, so sadly, I only get to take one, one of each. And so I get to take one junior team, one 16 year, one 14 year period.
Okay. You said that all presented, so that's all.
Okay, so I can take two, two alternate pick in the team.
You're amazing.
And so most of the time what that would be is, let's say that ultimate is 120 at wrestle off on that spot, then she would more than likely not just 120, she would also wrestle that next weight class. And she would flex 222. So that's what I mean by all.
Good.
Good questions. Any other questions for Susan? I will state a couple of things to, to, one thing, I'm turning off the mic real. Mic's back on. Ryan is on with us. Javier's on with us. Anthony Rich is on with us. Brogan Klein is on with us. Mariah Robinette is with us. I would just want to let you all know who's with, on with us right now. That said, couple, couple of things for yourself, Susan. You got your flyers out. Jury, Jury Hotel did send out something this week. We need to finish up those. Okay. Okay.
Between you and I, I don't agree with the date that she once made associated because we don't have those then. So I have to talk with her.
Okay, that, then the last thing I had was that dual team single, it's for all those teams. They, we need to get those from. Okay, very good. Any other questions? If not, we'll go on to the men. Anything? Okay. Going to the men. Last time we got, we talked was at state tournament on the plans. We had the Southern Plains camp. We sold that. Things have been somewhat silent and both things just until recently. I have been pretty vocal myself relative to making sure that elected people in both categories, both camps, women and men are at the district level, be included. Why? Why? Why do I say that? Well, in 1988, I put the, I put that district section into our organization because I noticed how much there was no continuity to USA Wrestling on, and what was happening out of the folk style season. And there wasn't a lot of continuity or support in that. And so we put that into the districts and, and since the money and the stuff like that, that we raise and we budget comes out of this organization, it's key that we keep the districts included in, as we go forward into these freestyle Greco seasons. And that's why I've campaigned and made sure that I've been vocal on that going forward. Also, I, I want to appreciate and point out Javier has put, done a great job including women's stuff too, but putting together a calendar that we tried upfront, tried our best to do on a link that was kind of a handwritten thing. He put a PowerPoint presentation together. My hat, hats off to him on taking that to the whole entire next level. Going forward, I'd like to make sure that we have, if people have open rooms, that we note those, note that in there also. As we go forward, people are going to start dropping off after this tournament. Maybe it's time to step up and look at more RTC practices or things like that going on. Like I know we do Carol, well, how about, how about twice a week? You know, type thing. But that's just my own comments. I want to turn this over to Scott.
Yeah. As I know Danny Grable was wanting to get some money, each RTC should be having 2,000 a piece, correct? Because Danny's having a hard time at being given, I find it plays ways to make them out.
RTCs was budgeted $6,000 for the entire state. Which would put it at $1,500 per district.
Each district rep is in charge of distributing RTC money because that's what was decided at the meeting.
Yeah.
So they will decide who gets the RTC money.
Which is another reason why I want the district people involved too.
Okay, so I can't give them money then.
Who?
I can't give them money then.
On RTC, yes, if you have money in there, you can, but you also have a rep that's on freestyle. You have a freestyle rep that does that too. I mean, that's why he's there. But you have money sitting there in camp money too. But you have money sitting there in camp money too, that I don't know if you've spent or not.
Is that invaluable for everybody to send? For RTC, for, I mean, the money does?
Yes, the, yes, the money is online, uh, and it's. Yes, it's online, it's budgeted online, uh, in our budget, and it's available online, yes.
Is there a way for people to see what is out there and available that's left? Like it's, say, if you have fifteen hundred dollars and they use five hundred, can they see that? So they know there's still a thousand left out there.
Um, and she does her best in staying up with and keeping things current, but it's all the time moving and things are coming in. And, and until it stops, she can only give you a snapshot of what that looks like. But yeah, that's, I would go to Mickey on what that looks like right now, you know, if you have a question on that.
So the male and the female rep have to agree on the funding spend?
Uh, no. Uh, but if they have fifteen hundred dollars, then they need to work together and, and do that within the district, yes.
The district.
We have to do it.
You have a woman and a man, right? And you're saying there's seven hundred fifty dollars one has, seven hundred fifty the other has for RTC. You're right, they need to work together and get that money spent, yes.
We could both probably plan off on that.
Uh, yeah, I, and yes. Yeah.
No, what else?
And I know well, and, um, I know Noel, I hear there's planned that we're gonna go to Carol and they're both gonna be there. But I, whatever's decided, they, they control that money and, uh, I think they had a pretty good handle on what, how much they had spent themselves. Okay? Scott, go ahead.
First thing I want to do is I wanted, um, to mention on Fargo on dorms. You got the dorms for sixty-six dollars per night, those are the AC dorms. And that's sixty-six dollars per, uh, competitor or athlete. That includes lodging, um, food. And our entry fee is eighty-four per style, uh, for kiddo. Um, so wrestling, stable styles, uh, rough, I believe it's five hundred seventy-four dollars. Is what that would come up to for that six nights stay. Now, um, it stayed as where I've been talking with their rep about, uh, their facilities. Now, on their facilities, uh, for the three days, it's seventy-eight dollars, uh, per kid for three meals, dorms. And that is also, uh, charging, that's the charge of the facilities and everything. So I don't, uh, he's just charged me seventy-eight for the dorms and food. He's not charging me for the use of, uh, the plaster center for the meal. And, uh, also their wellness center. That's all gonna be free, he's just charging me for dorms and, uh, three meals a day for three days.
Seventy-eight dollars?
Per kid.
How much?
Seventy-eight dollars per kid.
Per day?
Per day.
Yeah.
Per day, per kid, three squares, and a cot. And then the facilities are, he's not charging me for the facilities.
So two forty per kid, three days?
Mm-hmm.
Plus five hundred for Fargo.
And that's Fargo camp?
That's Fargo camp, is a seventy-five per head, per day, three meals and a cot.
Is it seventy-five or seventy-eight?
Seventy-eight, I'm sorry.
It's gonna be eight. So seventy-eight per day, per kid, for three meals and a cot.
Mm-hmm.
Three days.
And then he's not charging you for the facilities, where we're gonna put ten mats down, eight to ten mats.
I just brought it off to two forty.
So, yeah, so two thirty-four per kid.
That camp's connect is tied into the Fargo money.
Correct.
We've always put it in the Fargo money, we've not isolated it. We've rolled it all together.
Now, as far as, um, what we've done this year so far, I'm gonna eat on some of that stuff, and Bobby's done it, as you noted, an outstanding job. I was asking if he could put something together for me where the parents could go right to it, find it. Um, he did the QR code deal, so they could click on there, the forms come up. We're also working on, I think, Mickey with the payment.
The Venmo's on there.
Correct, yes ma'am. And so I think that's gonna make it a lot easier for all of us and hopefully cut out more the middleman is taking the money uh, as much as possible. Um, the other thing we're doing right now is we have, uh, started these hubs that we talked about at state, now they're going. We had DAP, um, left this past Thursday night at Goddard, we had Chase in Garden City. A couple of weeks prior to that, I think it was four fourteen, twenty twenty-five, Gary Wayne Harding came in and did a session as well at Goddard High School. And then, um, from here on out, we're gonna have Chase on Monday going to Garden, or DAP going to Garden City. And then, um, Chase is gonna follow up on the fourteenth, nineteenth, twentieth. Um, he's gonna hit Goddard on the fourteenth, Chase is gonna hit Emporia on the nineteenth, and he's gonna hit Kansas City, I believe Mill Valley on the twentieth. DAP is gonna hit, uh, Garden City the first, he's gonna hit, um, uh, let's see here, uh, Manhattan on the seventh, and DeSoto High School on the sixth. And so, and then, um, I'm gonna have enough money, that's with DAP's plane ticket. I, we paid for DAP through Southern Plains funds, a hundred and thirty dollars and five cents for his round trip ticket to win.
How much?
One thirty point oh five.
Not for DAP?
What was it?
Five sixty.
Oh, that was five sixty?
Yeah. Five hundred and sixty for his round trip.
Oh.
How did he get on?
I was gonna say, that was a hell of a deal.
Yeah.
I was gonna go up to Minneapolis too, well, I was looking at the wrong thing then. So I'll have to reconfigure my stuff, but I will have enough land to bring it back through. Uh, each one is three spots towards the end of the month, the first of June. Um.
And when, what are you saying, Mary, he has an eight thousand dollar ceiling?
Eight thousand dollar budget for that. And now that's, that is tackling the girls and the boys. Uh, one thing we've noticed, I've been reaching out to the different, um, RTCs and, and also clubs. And our numbers have grown quite substantially this year in the different RTCs and clubs. In fact, our little club in Southeast Kansas, our RTC, last year we sent six out here, fifteen we sent twenty-four. Uh, that's how much we jumped in a year. But I think that's been the trend throughout the state this year. Our numbers here today or this week are up probably around three hundred, maybe a few more than that, about a bigger range. Um, so that's also a positive. But I wanted to send these guys some rounds, uh, because they're relevant, both of them were around Vegas last week competing. Um, they are able to talk the verbiage of these kids as far as how to work the mat, um, what the officials are looking for, uh, you know, the rules, how to operate under those rules. And then just to show, um, good fundamental technique to our kids, and these are guys that wrestled for this state, you guys know that. And, um, they're giving back to us, and at the same time, um, we're giving them some, uh, financial assistance to help them out in their training as well, so it's really a symbiotic relationship between them and us. And both of them are, uh, wanting to be a part of the staff for Fargo as well. So with them working with our kids during these training sessions, then they can follow back up again, working with, you know, running those training sessions at, at state, at the Fargo camp and then corner and helping corner those kids up at Fargo as well. Um, so those kids are used to them and comfortable with them and know the verbiage and they know those kids. And also our coaches are there, uh, watching what they're doing. And I've, uh, asked the coaches to film it, since we're paying for this. And, um, then to study the film and then go back and use that footage, uh, in your next practice sessions to help those kids out with what DAP and Chase have been showing them. Um, on, we're good on T-shirts for Southern Plains as well. Uh, Blue Chip has provided us with the T-shirts. What we did in that order is I looked at what, um, Coach Billie had ordered the last two years, and it was the exact same number, uh, from two, uh, twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-three. So I just used the same number this year in twenty twenty-five. Um, so hopefully, you know, that covers the kids during that ten. I don't think our numbers will be as big this year since it's not gonna be in our backyard. Um, so we might have some leftover tees and maybe we can sell those, um, either at the state tournament next year or sell online um, through the store.
And that, that amount, um, was two hundred T-shirts basically?
That was two oh nine and two oh nine.
Yeah.
Um, that almost used our whole budget of four thousand dollars. We had, uh, three hundred and twenty-nine dollars and eighty cents left after that T-shirt. Because we had a four thousand dollar, uh, line there for that. Then also that would go to hotels, and I held off on hotels because I wanted to see, um, we would have three hundred and twenty-nine dollars left to, uh, purchase, uh, two or three hotels for Southern Plains for the coaches that need or lack.
I didn't hear that.
Uh, hotels for Southern Plains. Uh, you'd said we could get four, but we only really will probably have a budget of maybe two or three. So, added that four thousand after the shirts.
Yeah.
So I was, Susan, I was gonna get your coaches a room, then I was gonna get the males a, a room, and that would probably tap us out on the four thousand with the shirts.
So keep in mind, part of what I put out to you guys was that Southern Plains this year is kicking back eight dollars for every entry that we bring. We projected that we might have two hundred, that's two hundred times, uh, eight, that's like sixteen hundred bucks coming back. So, that, that, that's, so we got a little bit of cushion there, unplanned money that could come back. Uh, but, and it was in that spreadsheet that I listed for both you guys. Uh, but it had the rooms listed in there, and I think there might be some gas money and some food to buy and, you know, it like it ate up really quick, but, uh, I think I put you on that too.
I don't know.
I hear you.
Yeah, on duels, um, for Derek, where's Derek? I've given him the lead on the elementary duels and, um, he's taking care of all that, and I think we're square there, correct? And you're doing two teams for, for that event.
Two boys.
Two boys, so, yeah. And, um, is there anything, um, that you need to share with the group on that?
No, I bring those, I bring them up the last two years, I'm pretty comfortable with it. So they, uh, announced, Susan got it a little ahead of time where the location is, I looked it up, lots of options around there, so. Um, I looked into a couple hotels, I was gonna wait, and it probably locks up in Monday, I think. Um, and then, that strictly, on that one, it's, uh, two twenty-five per kid. Parents are responsible for hotel and transportation, the two twenty-five covers. What it's looking like is gonna be maybe two or three shirts now, per your email, and then a pair of shorts, and then two singlets, and then a registration fee support, so.
Right, we, we thought maybe extra shirts instead of shorts.
Sure, I, I agree with that.
We had a better package, I think, is what Ken got, is a little better package on that.
So, um, now, now that we're done with today, I can start looking to see who wants to help coach and everything, now we got some ideas of who's going. So I'll start Monday on it and, uh, the link and the spreadsheet, or the sheet that Javier put together has been great. I've already had some people sign up preliminary on that Google form, um, I'm keeping track of all that. And I just pulled my spreadsheet over from last year and copied it and be ready to roll, so.
No, and that's why I wanted Derek, he, he reached out to me and I couldn't ask for a better person since he's taken the lead on that the last two years. I'm just getting out of his way and letting him do his thing there. Um, as far as cadets, I have Ryan Smith, uh, and Coach Hill, and then Lamb, uh, Lambott, Coach Lambott, uh, taking care of the kids, going out to Utah. Um, hotels are taken care of, um.
Bands are good, we've got bands reserved.
Bands are solid, airplane tickets are good, we're good to go there. Um, entry fees we've taken care of, um, you guess, I think, Kurt, I talked to Tony Black and he said, here before long, we should be getting emails to register our team leaders and coaches and team, I did the hard copy. Um, and then, uh, Mrs. John sent the, uh, what was it, thirteen thousand, whatever, or thirteen hundred and something for entry fees.
Well, that's what I was just gonna say, didn't you guys decide to take a second team?
That was for juniors.
Juniors.
Yeah, no, yeah, cadets get one team and five alternates, that's what we take, and they talk.
Didn't you guys, we had a meeting and you guys talked about taking another team and you were supposed to let me know?
Juniors.
You're not juniors.
Do juniors.
Okay, I have not sent a second team check.
No, I'm, I was gonna make sure we were good before we do that.
Okay, so I was just wanting to make sure because I have not done that.
No, ma'am, I haven't, I haven't got that, beyond that one. So, but you have done the first team on juniors and you've done the cadets on juniors.
I've done six checks.
And fourteen years, yes ma'am, for each of the styles.
Yep.
Yep, so we're good there and I've sent the hard copy entry forms to those, uh, respected, um, individuals that are running those tournaments. Um, let's see, for junior duels, because we're looking at taking two teams, we needed to get a, a bus. Um, so I got a fifty-six passenger bus and, um, I went ahead, I, we haven't paid it, but I did, uh, get a contract for that. And I sent Ms. Johns the contract for that, do I need to do anything else on my end?
You just need to sign it.
I just need to sign it.
You sign it because you're the one renting it, because I won't be there.
Right.
So you sign it and send it and I'll pay it.
Sounds good, ma'am.
And it looks like you did bids two different places and it came in two thousand dollars less, one of them did.
Well, we're under, we have eleven K in our budget for travel for juniors. And that one cost us ten thousand eight hundred forty-eight dollars and fifty cents.
Yeah.
The Windstar did.
Hey, Scott?
Yes, ma'am.
Not to interrupt, I'm sorry, is there a way that we could, because the girls will also be needing to take a bus, is there an opportunity that we could use that as a negotiating opportunity for you to say, hey, now I got a whole nother bus, could you work with us a little bit since we're getting now two buses?
Um, well, I'm getting ready to contact them, I've been waiting on you to let me know where, when you want me to pick the girls up.
For Fargo?
For Fargo, because I'm, I wanted this week get the Fargo transportation.
Yeah, so I was just gonna try to keep it the same as what Travis has done, I think they, um, made the pickup location in Topeka. Is that where we've done it in the past?
The boys have, I don't know anything on the girls.
The girls met in Kansas City, uh, at McDonald's at Legends last year.
Okay.
That was the pickup drop off spot, uh, last year.
Okay, did that work out good last year, we can keep it the same?
I mean, it was fine, I, I.
We actually brought the buses to Ottawa and picked them up and then picked up more in Kansas City at that location. And then the drop off was just in Kansas City.
Email me locations, date, and time of pickup.
Okay.
And I will convey that to, um, the company that.
Okay.
I'm gonna do bids again for Fargo.
Okay, and then we're gonna do the same thing like the girls that didn't make it, they're gonna come home on that other bus.
Correct, correct, when the boys get there, they'll unload and we'll load the girls up to head them back home.
Okay, awesome.
And I'll let the bus company be wherever that may be. Um, once I get my bids, I'll shoot you that. Uh, the low bid, uh, the bids, but, um, it'll probably be the Windstar again.
Yeah, probably will, Travis found those guys and they worked well.
Then I will, um, I'll have multiple places.
Make sure when you do your bids on your hotels, they're gonna require you guys to put that bus driver up too, so keep that in mind in your hotels.
I did, I did, yeah, no, we, I told Ken and guys, so they, one of those rooms he got for junior duels in Wisconsin will go to the bus driver.
Yeah.
So that's definitely squared away. Um, trying to think if there was anything else, I can't think of anything right now. It, Fargo domes, Southern Plains T-shirts, the Windstar bus, uh, the Southern Plains, uh, training sessions, we're all good. I think we're good, I'm gonna, I will run those guys through one more time, but I think I'll only have enough funds to do three, uh, stops.
You're roughly sitting about twenty-eight hundred dollars for budget.
Yes, ma'am, yes.
Yeah, how are we looking overall, just comments on money relative to what's? Is there?
Numbers? I couldn't figure that right now.
Good.
I just know that because I was writing everything down.
Okay, anything concern you?
A lot of things concern me.
Okay.
Uh, so I think we're doing, I mean, on my end, I'm, I'm doing pretty good, one thing I've noticed. Uh, so I think we're doing, I mean, on my end, I'm, I'm doing pretty good. One thing I've noticed, so it's just obviously. Um, everything's gone up since last year. So everything's just a tad bit more than it was the year before. And that's the only, the only deal is, I mean, everything's just a touch higher than it was in previous year. I don't know if we've made those adjustments, but next year and when you guys are doing budgets and things.
And we did, we went up a hundred dollars.
Okay.
Last, since last year on, for every kid.
Yeah.
Everything went up, yes.
Things like this, part of it, huh?
Hey, and.
So, so that up, right?
And before you jump off and, and uh, I will ask one other thing. Um, it was brought to my attention, I think is a great idea, but when I put out things to both of you, I gave you a little formula that said. Uh, one coach for every six plus two plus Wyatt, remember, and a trainer, okay? And Wyatt's key there. I, I think we ought to be asking him to be on our team, okay? At whether he can do, no might be an answer, but the other thing is that. I think we ought to consider is a social media person that's going, going with the girls and then staying with the guys. And down on the floor photographing and, and sending.
That's a great idea.
So what's that?
Your spot, what, aren't you that guy though? Didn't you do Coach Kelly's spot now?
I did, but that's not actually in the.
Cause that's what he would, he would come and review people and interview.
This would be like moving things into social media, pictures and, and what's going on throughout the day and making sure that. They're highlighting, you know, what's going on in Kansas.
Right.
And, and I, I got that feedback from some people and I thought, damn, that's a dang good idea. Wanted to share that with you guys. Um.
I think.
It's a good idea, but you're gonna get funding.
Nobody does better than.
Yeah.
Yeah, Coach Kelly did a good one to fit his brain and, and see what he says.
Awesome for that, man. I'd love it. I've had information out there because, you know, those college kids are amazing with that social media.
It wants to get our Fargo team put together. The other thing I was gonna do is go back to what we used to do as far as putting um. A profile together of each of the kids so college coaches can see their profiles. Um, as well, because we used to uh do that for all of the kids that were on the Fargo team.
And we used to put like a panel together.
We have, we had a thing this last, it was, we, it was like a little tiny headshot and blurred. It wasn't like a full.
Yeah, it's been done, yeah, it has. Yeah. No, it's been, it's been done.
Fargo does that too.
Yeah, there, it, they've been, it's been done for Fargo too.
No, I mean Fargo has one.
Oh.
Yeah, we sent all the headshots and stuff and get the information. They put it in there.
They did not know that.
Yes.
Okay. Comments, questions? I brought up that, I brought up that just as a side note. Uh, as we go forward, if you guys like to do that, like maybe find a way to do it, you know, but.
Oh, the other thing, um, the last thing is Danny Greer wants in, some of the coaches wanna do um. A camp for cadets and juniors. I believe they're looking early June. Um, it's just gonna be a day that I mentioned to them that would be a good day to also do any challenge matches that we have. And I'm also gonna have to sit down and look at how they've done that in the past, because I have no idea how Coach Billby did the challenge matches.
It was best two out of three.
I know, but do, so. Um.
They still have to have a rep, and that was one of the things that we talked uh about um on that meeting. Is how do we make it so both sides feel like they were represented, you know? Do we have an actual official?
Well, that's what we would have at this site where we're gonna uh get the kids just to prep the day, you know, for a day. We're gonna meet maybe at Manhattan High School and put a bunch of mats in the gym, somewhere like that. Um, where we can uh visit with the kids, get, get everybody on the same page. And then also do some of these uh matches as well. I've hired, you know, a week before.
And which, which, which programs is this that you're asking?
We're talking pre, pre uh duels.
Pre duel?
Pre duels, trying to get, trying to get the kids together.
So does that include juniors then too?
Cadets and, cadets and juniors.
Okay, because juniors already have a camp baked in with their stuff.
Well, this is, this, we're not asking any money from the state, anything like this. We're just gonna all get together and.
Apologize. Juniors that has always just done that, showing up early down in Tulsa. That's right, they have.
They'd go down the day before.
Yeah.
And they'd have a site where they would meet, work out.
Hey, I'd be, I'd be all for that. You get to see who's doing, who's doing what, who's got what. And you don't get eyes on all those kids. Often times that you get there and you're like, well, I didn't know this kid was good at this or good at that, whatever.
And we didn't, we didn't do it on cadets, nor have we done that on schoolboys, so that's added cost that we'd have to find a way to find.
I would invite them all, but I would appreciate being in the know as far as what's going on.
Hey, hang on, um, Ryan, you're saying something?
Yeah, I, I, I would like to know what's going on and be a part of those conversations. This is the first I'm hearing about it. My maze pretty busy.
This is just, it's something that Danny brought up um and we're, I'm gonna look at it. We're, once we get these kids and we get this tournament done, I was gonna have a Zoom meeting with all of our coaches. That are gonna do duels and things like that. And then um Danny was gonna present it and see if uh this is something we're wanting to do, just meet, come together. Uh, get a workout in, we can do our challenge matches and get that knocked out, has somebody like Benegas uh come in. And uh officiate those matches for us as well.
You hear that, Ryan?
Yeah, I think, I think that's fantastic. And just one last thing, I did hit up Noah Rogers today. You, you mentioned a trainer. He might be willing to make that Fargo trip this year. All right, I'll shut up now, Derek.
Also, um, I talked to Coach Wince out at Hayes two, yesterday. And he's gonna be on board for Fargo and he might uh bring uh Dakota as well again. So that's an option as well, I think. I haven't, I, me and him.
I haven't ironed that out yet.
That we were gonna talk tomorrow. He's gonna be here tomorrow, Coach Wince, and we're gonna sit down and visit about those things. Uh, while the tournament's going.
Okay.
So.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
Um, one thing that was brought up out in District Four is when we had talked to the state that the camps would be ran at RTC locations. I think it's Garden City or anything, but it's not RTC location. That's not where our bulk of kids are going. So a lot of our kids had no clue that, and then we're going out there. It wasn't at the RTC location and they run that practice same night as an RTC location. So I, I have a, a lot of parents out in District Four pretty upset because they didn't know the opportunity was there. Because it was not held at the RTC location and it's being held in Garden City.
Yeah, um, on the RTCs, what I did is I looked at the sites around the state. Where um we have a lot of hammers. So that's where I started the first one. Um, I think you guys had a RTC set up and the guy didn't show up. And then you had the Hayes assistant come in.
Correct, but that, that was.
How many kids did you have there?
Well, between fifty, sixty, and a hundred.
I just, there was fifteen there then.
Lot more than fifteen, so I was in the room bad, I, but um, like that, that's, like I said, when we voted on this, like to bring them in and pay for them. It was voted that was we done at RTC location. That was in the motion.
I said hubs, I said I was making hub sites, is what I said, but I talked to Kurt about this and I said on the second wave. I would have them at a different location and Dodge would be one of those locations.
I, I'm just telling you like the, the response of District Four is there was some, some families that were, were really upset. They sent the kids to the RC, RTCs because they get that discount, the partner and things like that, and then they had no idea. They don't follow the social media and all that stuff, so they had no idea. They were pretty upset their kid didn't have an opportunity. That's how many went to Garden City.
Yeah, but that was, that's been out there for quite a while now. I mean, if you didn't know that, I don't know how you didn't know that uh Chase was gonna be out there. Or like this week, Dap's gonna be there on Monday uh in Garden City. Um, the deal is our state is massive when, when you look at geographically. And you gotta narrow it down to where you have a bulk of your traditional hammers.
Yeah, so we're here to better all wrestlers, not just your hammers.
Well, yes, but you still gotta drive somewhere. I only get eight thousand dollars and I gotta spread that out. Over this, a handful of sessions.
I, I just think it should have gone like, you should have talked to freestyle record directors in each district about it. Because they're the ones who are handling all those kids and all those other clubs, freestyle record.
I think, I think, you know, we're, we're far into this. We, we can work that out. I think you guys can work that out. I think maybe next year we'll make sure, but this year you've already got all that information.
I was gonna send one out there, but that's the deal too, is you guys as a district need to work together.
We absolutely work together, but we have freestyle and Greco directors that handle that stuff. And you haven't contacted the boys or the girls district directors for freestyle Greco in District Four. You have not called either of them.
Well, don't you have one in the north too?
Correct.
Yeah, I talked to him.
You've talked to.
Um, yes.
Because when I talked to him, what I was told is you hadn't called him. He talked to Susan, that's what I was told.
Do you want us to be in text messages?
You're not looking for a pissing contest, Scott? I'm just telling you what the District Four, what the people out in my area are upset about. I'm just bringing it to your attention so you don't have to take it as a pissing contest.
I'm not, but the deal is this, like I said, and this is something Eric Aiken and I were talking about one time, about the size of. How much land Kansas has and how it's gonna be hard to nail down all these different places where you have kids. So what we decided is find out where your concentration of your best kids in each different part of the state is. And focus on bringing the water to the tree in that spot and then people have to come. We live in southeast Kansas. I didn't put anything in southeast Kansas. We drove to Goddard one night. I drive to Kansas City two to three nights a week, which is a two-hour drive one way. And I plan on doing the same thing when Dap and Jay said uh Manhattan and Kansas City, we're gonna get back up there. I was gonna go out to Goddard the other night, but we got back from Vegas and I was too tired. And so I didn't drive out to Goddard the other night, but I mean, where I live, we gotta drive everywhere. And, and I could, I could have easily stuck one down there. But that wouldn't have been cool, you know? So what I did is like, me and Aiken's talked about, find where the hammers are at and put it up there first.
I think what's irritating people is, is that you're, you're focusing on your hammers, the best, the best, the best. And in wrestling or any sport out there, you have to focus on it as a whole.
But we don't have enough money.
It doesn't matter. You can't just say, I'm going here because you got twenty of your best wrestlers. That doesn't mean these other fifty wrestlers don't mean anything.
No, but you have to circulate it.
You have to circulate it around everywhere. The good ones will travel.
Session.
The good ones will travel just like the ones that are not as good. My kid, I traveled him everywhere.
Yes.
Why? Because I want to travel him. So we can't expect the ones that are not as good as your hammers to do all the traveling.
In the end.
Because the ones that, the ones that are hammers.
Somebody's gonna be upset.
No, but what I'm saying is the ones that are hammers are the parents that can afford and are willing to put the money out. The ones that are not necessarily always the hammers may not financially be able to do all of that.
Garden City kids can afford it?
I'm not saying all of them. Some of them may not be able to, but.
Many kids share.
They had great, great numbers. It was a, it was a, it was a very good deal and Jay said it was great. And Dap said this.
Yeah, but you know, I'm, I'm a member, so I will feed it up. It's great, ten kids or a hundred kids, how many kids are there? I got a video of Goddard, it was quite.
Goddard had sixty-five, seventy-two there, yeah.
I, I, I think that, I think it's kind of two things. I hear what he said and I hear what she said. Number one is, it seems to me like that glaring weakness in all of this is just the general lack of communication or the weakness in communication.
It's also website, having posted this stuff.
It was, so, to me, to Dylan's point, somebody should have called these people. But the other question is this, let's say hypothetically, let's say I have, I'm gonna, I have five hammers in, in Area One and twenty other kids. And I have two hammers in Area Two and I have a hundred and twenty kids. What is the better use? Where will we grow the knowledge of wrestling better? With the five hammers and twenty kids or with the three hammers or two hammers and a hundred and twenty kids?
Well, right now I think you should applaud what we got going on because it, you guys know what we placed last year at Fargo? Do anybody in this room know, as a team?
I did, but I've forgotten it was not good. Twenty-seven or, yeah.
Twenty-seven? It's like forty-eight.
Oh, okay, twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
No, forty-eight.
Oh, forty-eight.
The, when that guy was here wrestling and I was coaching, it was a hell of a lot better than that. So, you know, we can split hairs on where we're having these, and like I said, that was the first weight. You're not even giving me an opportunity to a second weight. And I told Kurt I was gonna move them to different places on the second way. But you can't get butthurt just because it didn't end up near town. Everybody would be, doesn't matter where you put them, you're not gonna make everybody happy.
The thing is, guys, it wasn't District Four.
It, I started there.
I, I'm gonna say it's there. It wasn't, it's in District Four.
Charlie, that, that wasn't the.
I understand, I was like.
There was no communication with the guys who run the.
Other things that you guys had to think about. It's one leader. It's four followers. Is it easier for that leader to call those four guys or the four guys to call the leader? Those four guys should have called him.
I, I, I don't disagree, they should.
I think it's all about communication. The, the, what I hear and what I've been saying too, is there's gotta be communication within the districts, okay? And.
When you say communicational, are you talking about actual talking to individuals?
There's elected people that are in each one of those districts that are freestyle and Greco. And we need to be talking to those people and, and.
Why isn't there a fifteen or twenty-minute weekly teams meeting that said, hey, guys, here's the plan for this week. Here we're gonna be blah, 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 blah? It's that freaking simple. I'll be honest.
That comes from leaders.
Our, our meeting, right, it comes from the leader, not so followers.
You need to put that, you need to put that into, you need to nominate, say, hey, look, we're gonna talk about it once a week. You can't just decide because you miss somebody and then get the information. The information was there. That's one thing you cannot, the communication was through flyers. The information was there. Cause I saw that, I saw that information a long time ago that, that those guys will be running those camps. I mean, I saw it like, what, a month ago?
Yeah.
So the, it was, the communication is there, but it's just.
Sorry, I love you to death, but I'm gonna disagree with you and I concur. I love you, I appreciate what you do, but how many times have I manually added kids to tournaments?
That don't have anything to do.
I'm not for you because you tell me they didn't get the communication. The parents didn't get the flyers.
I didn't communicate to them.
Okay.
Point being.
They can. The point being is the common theme is, what's wrong with just improving the communication? What's wrong with that?
Yeah.
If the leader's gonna lead, they've gotta lead you.
Let's, let's tie the districts in, okay? That's key.
Teams, it's not, like, everybody's a team player, so everybody needs to work together.
Yeah.
And if we can't do it as a team, then we gotta figure out how to work as a team. It's not an I, it's a T, even though there's an I in team.
I just think it boils down to, everybody knew where it was at. It wasn't a secret. All you had to do is let up in your Fargo.
I'll be the first to admit, my husband eats and sleeps this shit. I'm new to the board and stuff and I was confused, completely confused.
That it was in Garden City?
I was confused with all of it.
Why?
Because it, it's confusing and I'm, my husband eats and sleeps it.
It was confusing that it was Thursday night at six to eight o'clock?
But it wasn't like, it wasn't out there until.
For you to find, well, now, easily for you to find.
Correct, and like I said, my husband eats and sleeps it, trust me, twenty-four seven. I'm Scott the best, so I will say this and I've had my own issues. Our website is atrocious. There is so much old data on there.
That's why I had Javi do what he did.
And, and, and like when I was trying to find the stuff about the petition, I literally, it took me hours. And what I found was from twenty sixteen. Our website, even if I say to somebody, go to the website, they're gonna, they're gonna message me and I'm gonna have to send them a link. Because they will not be able to find it.
Do we have?
Even if he did put it on a website, I'm not sure people would have been able to find it.
Do we have a consensus? We'll work with the districts going forward? That's what I heard.
In District Two, we sent out an email to all the clubs about who was gonna be at Goddard on Thursday, about the Shazer team. That's how the information got to District.
That's how the information got to District.
Yeah.
And Dap will be here tomorrow and I wanna give him a shout out between sessions.
Okay.
Um, since he's came this far and trying to help our kids out, give back. Uh, take a minute between the two styles and give Daniel a shout out for every, cause a lot of kids don't even know he was from Wichita. And we need to not let that happen.
Let's do that. Let's do a shout out. He said Dap's here tomorrow. Let's recognize it.
Acknowledgement, probably. Hell, probably before the tournament.
Even if he's not here, we should still say his name.
Right, yeah.
The, the point going forward, let's make sure we communicate with the district reps that are elected. You're hosting meetings with the district elect. Let's go forward. Host of those meetings, including everybody that's elected in there. As you're passing it on. That's what I heard you say.
Absolutely. Just communication with our district reps. They're the ones that know those emails and can send out the email he was talking about.
The district rep sends it out to all the people, clubs in their district.
Right, yes.
You gotta take care of your own district.
Yes.
Right. To help.
So let's go forward. That's what I'd like to see is that commitment out of all of us going forward to do that.
I think medium was like maybe forty-five minutes. I mean, it wasn't terrible and we got some things solved, but it was just easier for me to talk to everybody. And everybody went their own way. We had great communication and then I didn't have to send out twenty emails to everybody.
And, and then you're following up too, right?
Yeah.
So that's the expectations going forward. Appreciate it. Appreciate it.
Scott, I did have a question though. On the Fargo, um, room and board, just for her, is that just the boys? Or is that?
Yeah, that's for the boys. That's for the boys.
Boys only?
Boys only?
Oh, now hold on. What's the question?
Well, I mean, for me, that was the boys.
The sixty-six dollars per day is regardless, boys or girls, it's same thing.
Did you get that number like from a person?
I got it from USA Wrestling.
USA Wrestling.
Okay, and is that something that I?
It applies to yourself too.
So she needs, okay. So I need to call about getting air conditioned rooms?
Uh, yes.
Okay, okay. We need to get that number to her. Can you send that to her?
It's just Tony Black's phone number. I mean, you got his, his contact stuff, right?
Um, that's all you did was just call Tony Black and say, give me air conditioned rooms? I'll send you chocolate.
Oh, I didn't know, I didn't know how that's done. I'm not sure. I've never.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't know how the process works. So is that all I have to do?
Yeah, I just reached out and.
I mean, I'll send them chocolate every day if you give us some air conditioned rooms.
So no one called South Dakota State and said, hey, one signing up or you have to go through USA Wrestling?
North Dakota.
I'm sorry, North Dakota, sorry. But is that the process? You have to go through USA Wrestling?
What I'm asking.
I just know Tony.
Okay.
Okay, so after, after you talked to Tony, you didn't have to do any reservations or anything after that?
I just said.
He did it for you?
Pretty much.
Okay.
Cool, that's cool.
Could I, can I steal his number?
I'm getting it to you right now.
Okay, awesome.
Okay.
Scott, Scott, you're gonna need some, some little effort for the weather. Just hopefully.
What I found, uh, I think you're getting their wheels. So I just have their way and take care of the boys. That's enough for me anyway.
It's a lot of work.
Yeah.
Messages.
Let's go back to focus here because we all wanna get out of here, okay? Um, anything else, Scott?
Yeah, we request.
Yes, sir.
But it, I just wanted to know what it's, what's the cost for monkey to go Fargo?
Yeah. How was it twelve hundred?
Twelve hundred this year?
Yeah.
That's when they don't have to pay out.
And there's a lot of centers.
There's all those. Yeah, we can get it. It's not being spread it.
One place for her, the gentleman that was sitting back here from Stafford, that owned, that owned the tire company.
Yep, gotcha. Thank you.
He told you, said, look, I'm willing to sponsor, uh, USA Kansas.
He said he was willing to take, to change the oil on our vans.
But he also. That being I drove, I checked the oil on it this morning, the radiator fluid, but in about, I'd say a thousand miles, it probably needs changing.
Yeah, that light will come on and it'll stay on once it needs.
The other thing too on that van, when you idle at a light, it'll kill. When you put it in drive, it'll fire back.
Yeah, I think you turn that off. I think you, I don't.
It has the, it's an automatic start and stop.
I got, I got a little bit too, a lot of people said that Scott just wants to make the hammers good, right? I mean, I will say that he started a kids club at Gerard where there was no wrestling, right? So.
No, I'm.
Wrestling, growing, growing wrestling is important to him.
I'm not saying that's its only intention. I'm just saying we have to focus on everybody as a whole.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's why I brought these guys in. I mean, you know, honestly, I could have, I could have said, you know, whatever the Southern Plains money and did one little pop in one place and, and dropped the whole deal right there. Then I figured if we could spread this out throughout the state, this eight thousand dollars, um, district board's big. And there's a lot of land and not a lot of people. And so you gotta be able to try to find your biggest concentration of people.
Biggest audience.
And do it there. And, um, it only makes sense. And then on the second wave, like I said, I was gonna bounce them to different locations, not the same ones. But again, I needed to start somewhere. So I started where I had the biggest concentration base of people. And stopped them there in their spots. Um, and it is taking some work, you know? It's not easy, uh, flying Dap all the way from Minneapolis and Jay's from the OTC. But they're the Kansas guys right now that are relevant and they're competing and they're doing well at a high level. And then they can convey what they're doing to our kids. Um, you know, and if we had to drive, we gotta drive. But I mean, I don't know how many miles I put on my truck in a given year, just packing my kid and some of the Dillo girl from Shenood. Some of my girls from, uh, is honestly, I have more girls wrestling for me than I do whites right now in my part of the state.
Pretty standard down there.
So I'm packing a lot of, a lot of kids around these things, as many as I can get in my truck.
Okay. Hey, um, before we wrap up, just a couple of comments I want to, um, your next meetings when with the team? Probably next week?
I want to know after today.
Okay.
Um, it will probably be within the next two weeks though.
Okay, and your next meeting with the team, districts, you got districts, you got districts? When are you having your next meeting to, as a whole with the teams?
I'll, I'll end up doing one next weekend. And I'll put, again, like I did my last one with you and Vicki on there. Um, I'll send you that Zoom link and then all our coaches, uh, for these primarily right now for our duels. I want our dual team coaches, state chair, treasurer on that, uh, meeting.
Let's make sure the district reps are in those meetings, okay? Offer, send them the, they can say no, but let's make sure they are on the meeting notices.
Sounds good.
Okay.
And for me, um, my buddy here is gonna print me out that thing so that I know where the most concentration of girls were. So if I have a coach that has got like ten girls that are going, I'd like for him to be part of the staff just because I'll, I'll use some of my Garden City people out there. Their girls are super quiet and shy and I could be out there and they won't respond for me because they're not, um, they're not used to me. And so I'd like to have them have an opportunity. Um, with girls, it's a little different. They're a little more emotional. And so I'm hoping that this weekend I'll be able to, so, and that, and that's why I haven't really reached out. I have, um, the elementary duels coach already figured out, um, but beyond that, I haven't actually selected, uh, cause I'm waiting for this data to come out.
Sure.
Will your Fargo staff get checked?
I put a list of what I have so far that have been confirmed. Um, and I had Javi Osak on that site that he's been putting everything on there. So, and it's a, a really good balance. Then I also have some college coaches on there and then Jason Daps on there as far as competitors. Um, that I still have some slots that I haven't located either.
I just think, like to see the guys going to Fargo, participating in the RTCs, right? Coaches need to get to know the athletes better and vice versa.
Yeah.
I agree.
Reward coaches that are putting in the time at RTCs on that, on that, honestly.
Are you done? Are you done saying what you had to say?
Uh, I mean, that's just kind of my thoughts, right? There's a little bit of like, we get like one guy show up to an RTC. And it's like District Two, right? And it's a different guy every week. Why can't, if there's five District Two coaches, you know, in the Wichita area, all five should be trying to go every single week? That's all I got to say.
Listen, that little club, we're so.
We're closer, right? Yeah. And I get, people have lives and families. I got three kids that are going to wrestling, right?
Yeah, I've been trying to get you on this thing.
But that's just. Happen to get athletes and coaches on the same page.
Right now it's either confirmed, but I do that, it's on there.
But there's this, the local guys, right?
Say that again.
Just the local guys showing up every week. Why can't five show up? Not just one?
Yeah.
And it's different in every district. That's just how.
And, and within District Two, we should work that out if that's, that's a suggestion, you know? Let's see what the district.
You wanna be a, Tony, you wanna be a coach at Fargo? Your responsibility, part of your responsibility should be to be attending as many RTCs as you can.
Yeah. How you gonna know the kids if you're not?
That one should be on their resume. You're looking at their resume.
I've been looking at like Iowa and some of these other states and how they do it because we have to come up with a different solution. And they have a lot of different steps put in place. You have to do, that's why we're only for even consideration. I'll see you at some tournaments. Uh, it's in, uh, so many events and that kind of things are re- everything like that. Running practices is another thing that they have on there. Uh, fundraising is another thing that, and they have, just in Iowa, you've got a battery things you gotta do that you'd be considered to be on staff or Fargo. And I think we need to get to the point, whoever does this, uh, to put things in place like that in order to. Cause I don't want to, Jerry, I mean, you put on tournaments?
Nobody does more than Derek.
I know, that's my point.
Hey, Scott, if you don't mind, let me come back to that topic, okay? I mean, that's a great topic. It's the last thing on our list, okay? Um, you had a question? You were getting ready to say something?
Well, actually I have a motion about that, honestly. Uh, we have a divided state, horribly divided state. We have two camps of people. Uh, we have people who don't get along and other people who don't get along and it's crap and I'm not a big fan of it. Uh, we have guys that don't talk to each other, this, that, and the other. Uh, I have a motion that I wanna put forward that I moved that the freestyles, Greco directors of each district get selected to the Fargo staff or a first right refusal. After that, they have three coaches that they can take. They would, nobody knows their staff, their guys, their district, their coaches better than the freestyle Greco directors of each district. They know who would best represent their district going forward through Fargo.
You can't do that this year.
No.
So. Do that this year.
I know, hold on, hold on.
Let me finish. So I mean, the freestyle Greco directors of each district must be selected for their staff or have first right of refusal. Additionally, each director will have the ability to select three coaches from the district to be part of the Fargo coaching staff. This ensures equal representation from everybody and the great guys get picked from each district. Cause it is from the district director. So everybody's working together in each district to make sure each district director can then make their qualification. Hey, this guy's more qualified. This guy's putting on tournaments. Derek's doing all this stuff. Derek should be the guy.
I think this is something that needs to be, uh, done.
I'll sign in your motion.
Next year.
Right now.
Steve seconded the motion. You made a motion, seconded, discussed.
Discuss. Four. Four, I mean, do we not, do we not already?
Not District Four.
From all districts.
Not District Four, cause the list that Scott's put out has, I, I'm John Black, I'm saying, but he runs Pratt County College.
Keppley.
Keppley. Keppley has not, hold on, let me just.
Coach Wentz.
Can you let me speak? Keppley is listed as a District Four representative. He runs his, and his club is sanctioned at Goddard. And is not a District Four representation. He's also never been to either of the RTCs in District Four and knows no District Four kids. So I, how is that representing the kids out in western Kansas? He knows none of them.
I think his question does represent.
I, I am. I'm not saying it doesn't, it doesn't represent my district. Great dude. I like him and he's a great representation of our area. But he just, he doesn't know the kids in District Four.
Yeah, then I have Joseph Cornejo on staff and I also have Coach Wentz on staff.
Then don't, then put him on the District Two representative, not District Four representative. He's in District Two. Who chose Keppley? Keppley is a District Two guy and you have him listed as a District Four representative. I'm just saying, Keppley's my, again, I don't have nothing against Keppley.
Ken, Ken is District Four.
No, he's not, not for freestyle Greco.
Freestyle Greco, he's, he's got his club.
He has a club sanctioned in District Two.
But they train out of crap too.
But his club is sanctioned in District Two, therefore by our bylaws, he is District Two.
Yeah, that's where you're sanctioned.
That is true. He, he doesn't come to any of our RTC locations. He doesn't come to Western Kansas where the kids are at. You can't say he's a coach for Western Kansas.
Yeah, but you just had the Hayes guys come down.
Correct. I, I, I can only give you one example.
And you guys reached out to Cornejo and you wanted him to come down, right? Did you not? I, I, so I'm going for Deho on the list.
Motion.
I'm just saying. You have representation there.
Well, we're discussion. That's what's, we're in discussion.
So we are, we're somebody that you want to get District Two there. That's not something that I wanna get, any, any of it, but Keppley is listed as a District Four representative and he's not a District Four dude.
Well, doesn't mean there's not other District Four people.
Right. I think Clay Wow is the best guy to make that decision, isn't he? With his, with his district. And I play, he's a freestyle Greco director.
Well, hold on, hold on. Clay Wow worked with Scott.
Wait, wait, guys, wait, wait. This is a perfect example. Clay Wow is the freestyle director for District Four, correct?
Correct.
Why the hell isn't he?
Or James Billby's ours and he's not on it.
I'll tell you why I'm Clay. I asked him to do duels, cause he wanted to do duels. And he said he would. And then he said.
You said he would.
Let him, let him, let him finish. Let him finish.
You said.
Dylan, Dylan, let him finish.
I got a three hour fucking drive home and this is ridiculous, guys. This is, this is ridiculous.
You're not.
He made my vote. Everyone here knows my vote. This is ridiculous.
But we haven't taken a vote, so we.
Give us ten minutes.
Ten minutes is ten o'clock?
I know, I know.
I got a three hour drive home and a three hour drive back tomorrow.
You're staying?
Hell no. I have kids in the car waiting for this meeting and we're playing crab ass.
Here's the truth. We can't get, we're an hour and a half into a meeting agenda that had fifty-five minutes on it.
Yeah.
And while we have had some good conversations, there's been a whole bunch of bunny trail things that we just run down forever and we never finish a thing, a single thing. We're an hour and a half, over an hour and a half into a fifty-five minute agenda.
Coach, I got to gym. If you guys weren't staying.
I got kids I have to get home that are not my kids. I have a kid I have to take to the doc station who's not mine. Does not belong to me.
So we had a motion on the floor, we seconded, we're in discussion. Is there any other more discussion?
Well, I asked him what other people from District Four he wants to say.
I'm not the one to choose that because I'm not the freestyle.
Clay's not here.
Yeah, correct. He's not, he's not a voting member and he, he'll probably be here tomorrow with his kids. I don't know what Clay, he was in a wedding today.
Jake, the reason we have a, we have, you know, we have freestyle directors in each district and they should be involved.
I think you should put this in for next year. I don't think, right now he's got a great plan. Let's try his plan and see how it works.
Just give me a year. Can you just give me a year if I felt that?
You, he got elected, he got selected by this. He was on the body, but let him, give him a year. That's always an asshole.
I will, I will say there's, you know, we're District Two, but there's not, I mean, people think District Two are just kicking things over and running it, right? That's the way I see it. There's not a lot of trust out there with any district.
Agrees. So this puts it fair and equal across the board. Everybody gets four dudes. Period.
I don't know that I.
I leave that up. That guarantees everybody gets four. No, I know, that's why I put the motion out there. It's a state body thing. You send the freestyle directors, they get, they work with him to pick, I mean, they get three dudes that they can pick. Work it out from there.
This is kind of truly what's been happening all year since I've taken this position. You guys have gradually, little things like this, you've been pulling away from me and doing your own little agenda. You guys have usually been doing a lot of this stuff on the ninth hour, you know? Like these weigh-ins, this is the ninth hour when these weigh-ins, and I told you guys to do satellite weigh-ins a while back. Well, we don't do that at the Kid State Tournament is what you told me. And I tried to convey to you, this is not the Kid State Tournament. Freestyle Greco is very unique. And we gotta, we gotta try to help the parents out.
Yeah, but that was voted on, so that's a minute situation. It came to the board, it was voted on to not do it. The board voted on that.
To not do what?
To do, not to do satellite. That wasn't one person.
Richard and I, you guys all vote your way. On the ninth hour have weigh-ins, plus in the bylaws, you guys have these kids weighing in two days before.
That is the bylaws.
The bylaws are that you can go the day before.
Pull the bylaws up, it's forty-eight hours, trust me. Been there, looked at it.
Let's go back to, let's go back to the topic that we have for discussion.
Yes, probably for a novice tournament.
It is for a novice tournament, but two years ago, two years ago. Two years ago, forty-eight hours was put into the bylaws and never updated. That's the truth.
I've got it.
Yes, and that's why the folk state was done that way, that's why this was done that way. But outside of that, we have a motion on the floor, we have discussion, appreciate your comments. I feel that this man should have the, uh, ability to run things. But I have asked him all along to make sure people are included, okay, at the district level. I heard him say he would go forward and do that too. Okay, um, so. Discussion, I want to hear if it's done or not, if not, call the question and we will vote.
I mean, so you, so what? We want Billby to go, that right? They should go, Clay Wild should go, or they should have first right of refusal. And that's up to them.
Also, so much conflict last year, right? As a result of last year. Let's let a new leader pick the guys he wants and see how it goes.
Not Michael managing, not a Michael managing, be honest.
I just sense it for the type of. For the next ten years.
That should be presented to the state body. I don't know, can I vote?
No. We appreciate your input though.
The state body next year, this shouldn't be something that this small group.
Can't vote on the state body now because I'm time passed for this year.
Exactly. Let's just go with it.
Okay, uh, call the question?
Just go with it.
Go with what?
Go with what?
With your plan. We have, we either kill the motion or, and, and it's over. If the, what I meant by killing was if they take the motion back, that's, would kill it. But, we have, uh, a motion on the floor, it's been seconded. Repeat the motion, please.
The freestyle Greco, Greco directors of each district must be selected into the body staff or have first right of refusal. Additionally, each director will have the ability to select three coaches from the district to be part of the coaching staff. This ensures a process that will be equally representation from all four districts of Kansas.
So why did this get brought up?
Because you haven't communicated with the freestyle Greco directors in the districts. You have not communicated with them. That's where it's coming from. The communication, your lack of communication with the selected leaders out within the districts who are selected by their district. You haven't communicated with them. That's where it's coming from. No, you haven't.
What the deal was with Clay is he drug his feet, leave me holding the bag for the duels. And, and even at the Kid State Tournament, when I was with you and Clay was there, I said, are you gonna do the duels? Cause he said, give me a few weeks. And so I gave him a few weeks and he kept dragging his feet and finally I said, hey, are you gonna do it? And he said, well, I thought I already told you I'm not gonna do it. So I, and I already knew what he was gonna do, so I already had hobbies put in place in case he did do exactly what I thought he was gonna do. But he wanted me to, he wanted me to fail and then I would have to load up and take the kids to Philly.
Listen, my kid's going to Philly. Like, I don't want it to fail. Like, you, you're acting like I'm coming at you, but my district. Okay, but what I'm saying is you're saying, well, this is my issue with Clay, this is my issue. Clay was elected by District Four because District Four trusts Clay. It doesn't matter, that's what it's about. Who you trust? The state trust.
They trust me. That's why I'm here, not Clay.
They trust all of us.
No, but Clay and me were up.
He will not contact the District Four rep.
And it's just like, why do you have to keep?
Because I asked this question to be called and we've talked about it and talked about it, talked about it.
I told Kurt, the first guy I reached out to, cause I felt bad, was Clay. And I said, hey, do you wanna do the fourteen duels? And he said, let me check with my wife. And I said, cool.
None of that fucking matters. Call the question, Kirk, call the question.
I'll call the question. Let's go to a vote. We're calling the question. There was a motion on the floor. They didn't take their motion back, that we have to vote on the motion.
Our district director hasn't talked to me one time and I run a club in the district. And that's who we want?
Not the district.
Who's your director?
Freestyle.
Who's District Ones?
We're trying to get a welder.
Uh, Slider.
Slider, yep. And the women's is?
That would be me.
Yeah, thank you, Mariah.
And then who's the women's four?
Women's four, I believe.
Tony, Tony Rich.
And then three is.
Ernowski or?
We're tying people, we're making last minute decisions and that's why the trust in Kansas is poor. Right? I know a lot of Kansas City people, District One, whatever, other districts. Nobody trusts anybody. Now we're changing rules at the last second. Somehow we have to move forward, right? I sat in a six hour meeting.
At state.
At state, at state body meeting, right? It was ridiculous. I don't know, something has to change. Scott is a new person. In, on the board, he didn't ask that you put him on the board. He just did because he thought he could help. Let's let him fricking do it. I don't.
That's the deal.
And he's doing a great job and he's been picking teams and he's got staff and.
If I'm doing a great job, you wouldn't be doing this. You wouldn't be making these proposals.
I think it's crazy. Being told that they are not gonna go, that's crazy. They're district directors, man. They know their coaches better than anybody else in the district.
And those district directors also have to work, Scott.
Hey, look, that is on them, but they don't have to go either. They can say, I don't wanna go. But take these three coaches, cause these are my best three coaches. These are, these coaches have the biggest representation from my district. Because you've got some coaches that are gonna send fifteen, twenty kids to Fargo. Well, those fifteen, twenty kids from going Fargo ought to have a coach that they know.
In the motion that you made.
They're not going to.
Well, I don't think anybody from the Punisher's Club is, is going and then they'll probably send a ton of kids. How many kids from the Dodge?
Real quick.
Yeah, who is it?
I, this could be a little wrong. Uh, I think the Punishers have one junior. And like three or four cadet boys, so I don't know that a club of that magnitude like. Necessarily needs a coach if they don't even send all four of the, or all four or five of those kids either.
It's just, who's sending who? And the district directors know who the guys are and who the best guys are, and who knows the kids the most. And who the kids are comfortable. Right? I mean, the kid, you build trust with these kids, they will, they will run through a brick wall for you.
For sure.
Right? I can connect kids that are junior kids and I can still ask them to do whatever I want. I've spent a couple of weeks with these kids and they trust me for.
I haven't seen you at one crush all year.
I've been at every single freestyle Greco tournament we've had. I, I went to Dodge, I went, I went to, I went to Dodge. Then I went to. Salina, then I went to Anil, then I was at the Gold Rush. Now I'm here. I'm at everything, man. Everything I can be at across here that I drove my kids across the state. And I do a little bit of club, man, a little bit of kids, and it's cool. But I go everywhere.
The motion that was on the floor.
I'm just saying, there's conflict, right? We gotta find a way to get past it.
That's why we move faster, we include everybody.
Or what I heard on that. Part of what I heard.
You micromanaging the person we elected in a position. We need to let him do his job. That's it.
If you don't like it, then just vote me out next year. It's that simple. I mean, honestly, it's that simple, but. Even like at the beginning of the year, you guys told me to do the state tournament, so I did the state tournament and then you changed it. And then you voted to take it away. Then the UW money, the journeyman money, you guys voted to take it out of my hands and give it to James. And now, I mean, and we could keep going down the list, but now we're on this thing. And right out here in this last little meeting at the freestyle state tournament, this is what gets laid down.
Hey, just make sure nobody moving forward can do anything but exactly that. Work with the district directors. They get, they get first right of refusal and they get coaches to make sure we are represented fully across the state.
The district director from District Two never got ahold of me about the UW money.
I, Scott, I don't know about that.
This is why. So if he's not contacting me, that he's got this.
Did you contact him?
I didn't need to, he had the money.
Where's money?
For UW's. The same money that you guys voted to take from me and the journeyman money and give to James. Even though two thirds of the state voted.
He's not doing it, I'm actually doing it. I'm doing the spreadsheet.
But when you voted for, who got the money?
The, the budgeted line item went to James, yes.
So don't cover for him.
I'm not covering. I'm saying, I'm the one that's putting the spreadsheet to you and I'm the one that's finding.
Who got the money?
He's in charge, yes.
That's what I'm saying, that's my point now. That line on budget was under my purview. And you guys voted to take it from him.
I never put it under your purview.
It's under the director's, yes it is, I can pull it up.
Line item is still by itself.
It's right under the director of freestyle and Greco, cause it's a freestyle and Greco event.
The, in the budget, it's not there, but as you stated. And, but going forward, what I heard you say earlier, that you would make a commitment to work with these district directors going forward. Okay, and then in this motion, you got, you attached three other things to make a decision for three other.
Three coaches from their district.
From each district.
Correct.
And, I don't.
Sixteen coaches, that's four coaches per district guaranteed.
District head of the district.
What's that?
The district.
To go and he picks every district rep.
Yes, he picks three. James will pick three guys that'll go.
Slider gets to pick three. Who's your, who's your guy up in District Three? CJ picks three, Clay picks three. And then anything that, we take a hun, what, we're gonna possibly a hundred kids this year, that's twenty.
Yeah, but that, those three other people took all ability to manage what he does, what he was elected to do too. And all we've asked is that he include those district directors in there.
So, just, ju- just an observation, right? So I completely understand. I believe that a district director in that, in freestyle. Should have the opportunity to go. I didn't realize that that, in this motion, that person would also have the ability to pick the other three. I do believe that somebody in CJ's role or Clay's role or Philby's role, I don't even know who the one in District. I believe that they were elected in, into their positions for a reason. Whether you like them or hate them or love them or whatever, I could honestly see, I don't understand why those people wouldn't be automatically be. To extend that, to let them pick other people, I'm, I'm a little bit iffy on.
I think it takes away his.
I don't understand why the.
Okay, well, I will then the motion that it is. You can take the, them picking their coaches, but they have to be guys that go or get first right of refusal. The district directors have to be the guys who are going. They are the, in charge of their freestyle Greco directorship.
So you withdrew.
Definitely.
But the district directors have to have first right of refusal, but have to be asked. So that's right amended?
I will second the amendment.
But.
We've had enough discussion.
This way for how many years?
It's, this would be an impressive.
It, it'll be viewed as. More backhanded, backdoor tricks from District Two, is what this is gonna be viewed at from state.
Can I just make a comment, babe? And I'm not disagreeing with or agreeing with anything that you're saying. But part of the conversation that we had earlier was how Kansas has not been successful in forty-eight and, you know, out of fifty states. Maybe, maybe it is time that we do a little changing, just because we haven't been successful for the last five to seven years. That maybe we do need to get some new people, and I'm not saying we should, I'm just saying, is, maybe should we think about it? Because if, if, to me, oh, I'm old school. If it's not working, maybe we need to, maybe not get rid of all of them, but maybe we need to throw a new one into the mix to maybe kind of re, re, you know, liven up things or something. I don't know if that would answer it, but if, if we're, if we're complaining that we're, we're sucking as a state. We can't keep doing the same thing over and over again and, and think that we're gonna get different results, right? So Scott, he's come up with this great RTC program and, and I think we could find out how successful that was. But we also have to give it opportunity to see how successful that is, right? But I also think that there's a lot of coaches that have been looked over, um, to be part of the Fargo staff. And partially, and I'm, I'm gonna be the first one to admit, I stood up in a room in our first meeting and, and I got my feelings hurt because I felt like I was. Kinda getting bullied as well, probably the same way he felt. I kinda felt like, hey, the state. Voted me in, right? And now you guys are telling me how to do my job? I, I, I was butthurt, I'm not gonna lie. I was very, very butthurt. What, honey?
They're telling you the same thing, this is for you too.
Oh, absolutely. And I, 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 I'm listening, but I will be one of the first ones to say that I, I, I was mistaken. I, I do need their help. Um, I need your help, I need everybody's help, cause I don't know this job. Um, but I will say there are, there are coaches that are out there that haven't gotten an opportunity to, to be part of them. Right.
You look at that list, it's not the same.
To be honest with you, I, I don't even know who's on your list. I'm just. That I, I also was upset, I, cause I did feel like I was getting Michael managed. I just wanna have an opportunity to, to do what I promised the state girls that I would do. And I, and I know that you feel the same way and I, and I really want you to have that opportunity, but I do kinda see just like, there's. There's pockets of our state that there's great, great individual girls, I don't know about boys. But that I probably would have never put on our staff, just because I don't know them. Does that make sense? I, and I'm not saying you don't, babe, I'm just saying that.
I got my first wrestling card from the state nineteen seventy-six.
Let's call, let's, are we done with discussion?
For twenty-two years too, but it doesn't mean that I can't still.
That we, he said, we, he did say we need to change.
Yeah.
But we're not letting a change do. But we're not letting a change do its.
I completely understand that.
I'm taking away from, for you to get a chance to try. Jacob, I'm gonna be honest with you. In all fairness, I felt the same goddamn way. We came up with a plan for Folk State. I believe our Folk State Tournament was as good as it could be. How did we get there? We had to have a vote at the board to enable me to go put that chain in place.
And the board did the same thing.
And who of those people that voted against it are on this board and they're here tonight. But it, it required a change in how we seen that tournament, right? That's, this. I, even though I was voted into my position, I didn't just get the authority to go do whatever the fuck I wanted. I had to make a proposal and get it approved by the board. Yeah. Is that not true, Scott? Did I not have to do that? Yes or no? Did I have to, did I have to make a proposal to the board and get it approved by the board?
Okay. Let's call. We done with discussion?
Yes.
Everybody agree we're done with discussion? Uh, the motion on the floor was amended just to include the districts, district directors to be.
Selection or first right of refusal.
And that was seconded by yourself. Are you still?
What you guys are voting on is two people.
No, all going forward.
There's five people.
I, but they might not be next year. There may be somebody else in your position who says, I don't like Clint Slider. He's not going. Well, that's not an option if Clint Slider is the District One Freestyle Greco Director. It takes the feelings out of it. It puts the guys who are in charge of that position in their district at Fargo.
And there's only two guys that aren't on the staff.
But it goes on, it goes on forever until another board votes that out. That makes sure the guys are getting represented and there's no feelings involved.
You did a second. You did a second.
You can't say it takes the feelings out. If one person can choose the entire district's reps, I, I could easily say all KCT coaches should be on staff because Clint Slider's a D-one rep. That, that's not factually true and that's not necessarily what it should be either. So, you can't say it takes the emotions out of it when you are counting on people to have friendships and, and there's gonna be some manipulation behind closed doors to figure out who those three or four guys, however many they get, elected are.
But when the question is solved.
Yeah.
We got a vote.
Let's go. Let's go forward with the, called the question. Let's have the vote. At, someone asked for the motion to be repeated. He seconded it. Um, question's called. Let's take the vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye or raise your hand. All opposed?
You in favor of?
How do you, but.
I didn't, hold on. I didn't see the vote count. I didn't see the vote count. All opposed? On two. Did you vote? Okay. Did, who else voted?
No. Two voted no.
Two voted no? Who, uh, and how many yeses were there?
Oh, yeah.
Three.
Four. Four voted, four voted, four rep, five represented, uh, the districts to be represented uh, within a first rider to be on the team. It passed. Okay? Lastly. The last thing was on the meeting agenda is, is to form a committee and develop the processes that this, to eliminate this. You come into a new job. I come into a new job.
I brought this up at the beginning of the year and you guys said, hey, be careful. This is what I brought it up at the beginning of the year.
Want to have a process.
Yeah, have the committee, didn't I? Hey, hey. And now you guys said no, but now you're coming circling back to do a committee after I proposed the committee?
No, he's meaning a committee for process, like due process of how things are done.
People walk into your.
None, yeah.
Her position, you go, man, how do I do this?
Yeah. It's a due process of like how he does his position, how I do my position, how Rich does his position.
You started out, you said, there's a lot of things unknown here.
Process of each board position.
Correct.
Yes.
That's what I.
It's like what an HR person does for a corporation.
And I want to make sure that we do have a process because this, this is not, this is not the way we should be doing.
See you in the morning.
See you in the morning.
Be safe.
Yep.
But is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Exactly.
During.
Or adjourn.
All day.
Hi.
I'm out.
Hey, what time does the tournament start tomorrow? Eight? Nine?
Nine. Are we having a tournament tomorrow?[1763.48]